Selective leaders to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Richard Sanders, a nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Alright. Welcome, everybody. We had printer issues, so I am the keeper, I'm the holder of the agenda tonight. But, select board members in attendance this evening, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, and Perry Brown. I'm Kristin Powers. We've got Deb Hawkins online, and everybody else in the audience, I believe, has signed in on the front. And, when speaking this evening, just be sure to introduce yourself, and friendly reminder to address questions, comments to Mike as the chair. And, I think that's about it. Addition this evening, so Michael Allen has requested to be on the agenda to go over the West Polat Village planning updates. Harley also has requested to be on the agenda to discuss some questions about library policy. So, not sure when you'd like to do that. But, maybe in the beginning or during facilities, I'm not sure what feels like.
I mean, you stay for the whole meeting anyway, so it doesn't matter, so. You stay for the whole meeting anyway, so it's not like you want to scoot. So, we'll just go under facilities, alright with you?
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
And then, there's a couple items to be updated on in the Highway Department that aren't in the agenda, but we can talk about those during the Highway Department Report section. So, that was all for additions, no additions. And, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, the minutes that need approval are from May 2nd. I'll move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
So, the first pre-requested appearance on the agenda was Judy and Rose, but Judy just holding it down tonight.
Rose is sick, so I'm here to speak to you guys. I'm gonna postpone the air conditioning for a little bit, a little minute. Rose wanted to let you know that she has not received any, she's not been able to catch up with Davy Tree to go over the tree situation up by the cemetery. I'm wondering if maybe some of you would call and see if you can get something going on that. It's really not a historical society issue, I mean, other than we don't want it to, want the tree to blow down and break any of the stones that have been repaired. And, next thing is concerning our event, which is gonna take place on July 22nd. We're wondering, is there an occupancy limit upstairs? There used to be, but I think maybe-
We talked about, I remember a discussion about it many, many years ago, actually.
But, I think maybe, and John Malcolm first said he thought the same, that since we have the outside stairs, the second exit up there, that there's, like, it's maybe 140 or something like that. It's not like you have to have the firemen there like we used to before they did the-
There's two methods of egress, so.
So, I don't, I wouldn't expect we'd have any more than that. And, traffic control, can we use the constables? We're gonna be kind of all around here, and, you know, kids be running back and forth and, and so on, and so, we were hoping that maybe we could talk to the constables and see if they could spend some time, and maybe the Fire Department would help us out as well. I don't know what we did at the 250th-
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I don't know what we did, I can't remember what we did at the 250th, but I think we, we really had, I think there was somebody to kind of slow the traffic down, and maybe they went through the library at the time, I don't, I'm not really sure, but we don't want to block off the library either, so.
That seems reasonable, as consensus of the board is to go ahead and have the constables help out with that traffic control during that event.
Thank you. And then, my last thing is the decision on the AC that you were going to hopefully be able to make tonight, so.
You got the quote from Jake, right?
I did get that. You sent-
I sent it to you, and I also sent it to you, Kristin, too. So, we got a second quote from Jake Williams in Granville, and I don't have it in front of me, and of course-
It's right here.
You got it.
You got it.
So, the quote was from Williams Plumbing and Mechanical, and it's to install an outdoor unit for existing heat pump air handler, set outdoor unit and make electrical connection to disconnect, run and make line set connections, run thermostat wires between outdoor and indoor unit, run condensate drain, pressure test, and evacuate the startup system. There's a one-year labor warranty. Also, this quote includes servicing of two existing central air units, cleaning indoor and outdoor coils, et cetera. So, the total install of the heat pump would be 6,400, install of the AC only would be 5,300, and estimated service would be 375. So, those are your two options, and the payment would be due upon completion of the work.
So, in what he told me, I had a couple texts back and forth with him, is he said that we automatically get a $2,400 credit on the heat pump.
Yeah.
That's what brings that price down. And it's-
Now, was that before the 6,000?
No, they take it off, so it's-
They take it off.
6,000 includes the credit.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's only gonna be like 1,000 more for that, and that will heat and cool.
Yes.
So, I don't see any reason not to go with that. It would save money on the oil, for sure.
Right, and he said that, I quizzed him a little bit more about size-wise, and we're the same size as the guy from Wallingford quoted, a five-ton unit.
Mm-hmm.
But it's not a York, it's an E-cone or something, and I looked it up a little bit today, and they're a little bit different technology, they're an inverter technology, and I asked him, "Do you feel that these are as good as a York?" And he said, "I feel they're as good or better than a York." So, I felt that the E, the inverter technology, I did a little bit of quick looking, and it seems like a pretty, a newer, a little bit more smarter. The Yorks are, are old and standby and stuff like that, but of what I've seen of late, I don't know that they're focusing as much on keeping up with the latest technology as, as going, but it's tried and true, we have a couple York units at work and stuff, so, but I-
That technology is moving really fast, is my sense of it.
Absolutely.
The newer ones are a lot better than the older ones.
Yeah, they started talking about some, some four-digit acronyms that have to do with heating and cooling, and a CER-10, and now that these are, you can get CER-20s, and it saves you so much more on cooling, and then so much more on heating. But it, I, I've known Jake since he was going to college, he was working at Telescope with me in, in my department, and, and that was only about five or six years ago, and he's already worked for several big contractors and gone out on his own right now, and I have a lot of faith in him. Nancy?
The only thing that I would caution you is to make sure you clear it with preservation trust. Sure.
As long as that doesn't go in front of the building, we found out that we're fine.
Oh, really?
It's the roadside of the building is, is what they're basically interested, they really, the last couple of times we've talked about things out back.
Okay, 'cause that's a change from-
Yeah, tar paper, tar paper is fine, almost, but they, but they really, it's basically what you can see from the road is what they're most important. Right down to the handrails and everything out front, what's attached to the building, but around the backside, stuff like that wasn't a big deal.
They're not even gonna notice it, because it's just going right through-
There's two units down there already, so.
Yeah, just another hole through, and right into the same wiring box, you're not even gonna notice it much, so.
It's great they can hook it up to our existing system.
And he's aware of the deadlines and stuff like that.
Does that need a motion?
Form of a motion, or? I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, let's get it.
Going with the, um, the heat pump?
Yeah.
So, for the heat pump and the service?
Yeah.
Yeah, the service is necessary, and I don't know if that needs to be a part of that, or just under normal maintenance.
Yeah, I saw that on Deb's report, she was asking about the status of the AC.
That's because I told them not to use them until-
Till we had a number.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Because Bill had said, "Don't use them, because they're gonna heat up and burn out," and Jake said the same thing, because they, they're really dirty, so.
This work would be done by July.
Yeah, he's, he's aware of our deadline.
Perfect, thank you so much.
So, Jessica made the motion.
Well, Bob made the motion, and I second her.
Any more discussion? Frank?
That's for the heat pump.
Yes.
Because S.A. approved, and they overrode the governor's veto, which is to get away from, and essentially, they want, one of the things that-
Right, we're voting on the heat pump.
And they're getting, the oil dealers, like, for example, so this takes you a step further in that direction, if that shakes out where the heat pump is, where you have, you gotta have those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. I'll, I'll take care of letting him know if that's already due, carried.
Yeah, that's fine.
I got a couple projects that work.
And I told him that if he needed help, that I'd be around to-
Yeah.
He said the unit's kind of hefty to get it down there.
I'm at it, yeah.
You know, if things keep drying out, we may be able to come across the lawn down here.
That would be good. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll keep you in the loop with everything that's going on, too, so, but I got to talk to him anyways about a project that works, so.
Okay, sounds good, excellent.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You won't be seeing us again. Unless we have to come back for something else, you're gonna miss us. Thank you all so much.
It's an open meeting duty, you take the crossroad.
We have plenty of other things to do, and I'll come in and bug in you guys all the time.
Only every other week.
Don't forget about the trees.
Yeah, let us know about the tree, if anybody wants to call and check it out. Maybe you guys can, can, you know, or send along a little bit.
Wind's blowing pretty hard out there, you know.
Michael's up next, if you're, if you're down.
I'm down.
Yes, you're up. Michael?
Thank you very much, Michael Allen, pre-broke planning, also Polat resident, hoping to give you guys a quick update on the West Polat Village plan. May I approach the bench?
Absolutely.
Wanted to provide each of you guys with a little copy and synopsis of what we're talking about here. Thank you. As you may have heard, we put together the draft of the West Polat Village plan last month, we had a presentation at the West Polat Fire Department, April 20th, I believe, and I've since made a presentation with, or at least reviewed some of this material with the Planning Commission as well. We've been collecting comments from the public and other boards on whatever edits folks would like to have on the draft, and I wanted particularly to call your attention to a couple of items, because we're looking to make some edits over the next couple of weeks with the goal of wrapping up the draft, essentially wrapping it up by the end of the month because of a grant deadline. Happy to work with you guys beyond that, as needed to tweak stuff, but for the grant purposes, they want to see stuff kind of wrapped off, so, looking to do that. So, wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of the plan, and in particular, to get your input on a couple of items that I think are sort of some of the bigger items on it, one of which being the wastewater treatment plant recommendations, which one of the, is one of the top priorities of the plan, is, is addressing some of the issues there to reduce the user fees. I wanted to make sure that, in, in your estimation, particularly Mr. Beecher, if you feel that we've adequately, you know, described some of the issues and problems and solutions that you've identified, for the purposes of getting grants at the end of this, at the end of this year, I want to make sure that we've kind of adequately addressed that issue. Jessica has already put me in touch with somebody that you guys worked with who's, does some of this work for, related to wastewater treatment systems. I'm gonna check it with that person as well, just to make sure they feel that it's adequate-
That was John Keeran, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Make sure that they feel that it's adequately, you know, addressing some of the issues, because I want to make sure when you guys go out for a grant, that this document really kind of supports what you're, what you're looking for. Second sort of major item on there is roadway safety improvements, including a roadway realignment recommendation. The roadway realignment is really to try and address some potential turning conflicts with vehicles that have come up. The solution that we came up with would necessitate the relocation of the monument, so I don't, I make, we're not relocating the monument, monument, because we feel that that's the issue, the, the real issue is the roadway configuration. The solution is to create more of a T-intersection of where the monument is, and we found a new location for the monument, which we feel is acceptable to many of the folks in the village. And thirdly, one item is, we identified some of the town-owned land, which is currently vacant just south of the, of the former quarry, with the recommendation in the plan that the town pursue a zoning change or a planned, planned design change for that land to accommodate some very specific housing types that would match the sort of scale and character of the village, such as very small lot, small cottage homes, that would be able to provide some housing for starter, starter homes, or, you know, families, seniors who are looking to live in the area, in lieu of just subdividing the land as it would normally, and being sold off as much larger single-family homes, which might be out of price range for many people, that being one recommendation. And, I wanted to make the board aware of these, because in particular, that last one, wasn't sure if there's more history behind that property that I'm not aware of, but it was something that I felt was necessary to recommend, because it would put that property, put that land back on the tax rolls, and maybe try and address some of the housing issues in the area. And lastly, while, while I can, one of the other priority issues identified in the plan was the need for a new store in the, in the village, and that's recommended to be sort of spearheaded as a local grassroots effort to develop a not-for-profit group, who would come together and fundraise to find a space and to get something started in that, in that venue. And I'm pleased to announce tonight that we have three local residents who have stepped forward to sort of, sort of take charge in that effort. They're here tonight, we have Dennis, and Lauren, and Haley, who I'm gonna be coordinating with to sort of get the ball started on this effort, and I'll work together with them to sort of figure out what our first steps are, and I figured, we don't need to have the plan finished to get started on that, on that desire, so, with that, I just wanted to say, I want to keep things open to getting any input from the board, and with that, I'll say, if you guys have any questions.
At this point, I, I don't have a lot of questions, I haven't had as much time as I wanted to to read the complete plan through, but I did notice, coming through town, that there are some people that are opposed to moving the monument.
Yes, one of them's a sign maker.
I think that from, that those are all, those are the primary focuses that, that we should be addressing in, in the village plan, the wastewater treatment plant, we're trying, you know, with, and that would tie in with your affordable housing, each time we add another, another building, house to the sewer treatment plant, the cost gets spread out a little bit better, so.
That's the idea.
I'm, in my plan here, obviously, I've got the digital version, but it skips from page 26 to 39, I don't know if anybody else's do that or not.
In your paper copy?
In the paper copy, yes.
Oh, yeah, I may have had a little issue with running out of ink and trying to restart the printer, and-
Well, if everybody else is okay, that's fine.
What issue, what pages, was it skipping from?
26, 27.
Do you have all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Then I'm, as long as everybody has them, that's fine. If I have, if mine is the dud, that's great, because I've already seen it.
Okay.
But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody else has those pages 34 and 36, which have the, the grants on it. Oh yeah, yours is fine, okay, good.
Good eye. And yeah, obviously, I, especially if some of you may be seeing this for definitely the first time, I don't expect comments or questions right away, but in, over the next couple of weeks, if you have any thoughts, concerns, questions, I believe, I should give you my email address, but to definitely get in touch with Jessica or myself, and let me know what, what your thoughts are, because I'll be looking to start addressing those comments in the next week or two.
Dennis?
As a housekeeping matter, when does the draft proposal harden into a proposal which is then presented to you folks, up or down? What is the timeline on this?
Well, the grant is closing out at the end of the month, and we have to report on the grant by the end of June. This, this particular plan could be added to the town plan, but if we wanted to do that, we'd have to go through the full amendment process. As it is right now, Michael, do you know, is there, is there official presentation to the select board at the end of this?
I have not gone back to check what I originally said, but if the select board would like a formal presentation, I'd certainly be happy to give, be happy to give one. So.
Honestly, this is the first time I've been involved in anything like that, so this is kind of, we're gonna work our, have to work our way through it.
Certainly.
And this also is a stepping stone for other, other grants.
Yeah, I mean, a plan like this isn't so much a binding document as sort of a snapshot of what everybody who was involved in the process said at the time. So, if we were to add it to the town plan, it would then become part of our, of our by, of our, our policy. As it is right now, it's just a do, a useful document that Michael has produced that we can use to get future grants. But yeah.
Frank? Lauren?
Is there an advantage or disadvantage to having it incorporated into the town plan?
Well, I think, speaking from my, it's generally regarded as a stronger case for going forward with grants, because it has become formally adopted as a, as a town policy, and once you do that, any actions that the, the town would take would need to meet in conformity with that, so it does have stronger, does have stronger weight in that regard. It can be that, you know, you could wait till your next town plan update to incorporate it as a-
Which is 2024.
So, it's-
It's not far away at all.
Yeah. Man, we better, the, we should better get on that.
But, I guess it comes down to time.
Yeah. If I can also add, just to piggyback off of that, the, the town plan has a certain weight with various state agencies. So, for example, with the Public Utility Commission, they will look at what's in our town plan, including the energy section, to determine things about, about citing of, of solar and things like that. So, things that we have officially adopted into our town plan do have a sort of weight of local policy behind it, with the state.
So, I'd also think that it's probably something we should weigh in with, like Ed Bove or something like that, who's working on, on the town plan with us and seeing how his, what his take is on it, and how, how the best way to, to continue the forward motion on this.
I can get in touch with Ed.
That would be excellent. Frank?
The self of the quarry concept is a little more complex due to the surge there, it's all ledged and incorporating it there, but there are some, there is a property, a woman sat next to me at the, at the presentation at the firehouse, that she says she would gladly like to get rid of her property, and it's a 28 acre piece of property across from the church. And, the state is relieved within a certain distance of septic and all this stuff, the towns, the Act 250 subdivision regulations, so you could acquire a 28 acre lot or more available out there if anybody wanted to sell, and maybe have a grant process through this affordable housing concept, and break that up into much smaller units, still hooked up to the septic, which would be easier to get in and get out of, and, and to provide septic, the septic to sewer system from, and to allow for future expansion, because otherwise, this is only, a window is only gonna last for three years to be able to allow for this Act 250 exception, and then they're gonna take it back. But this was to have basically designed, done by the state to allow for more villages to expand for the affordable housing goals of, of the state. So, this is another concept, which may be also something besides this property, this, because there is a number of larger properties up at Sprouse Gump, which would be much more easier to get in and out of for somebody to develop and hook up to the septic as well. Again, if there was money available, and it might be affordable for a long haul to look at it from a septic perspective and do a cost benefit analysis, looking at that and acquiring the land from a willing seller, if that were, you know, to meet the goals of the septic and the state and-
These are all things that we have to look into before we, before we pick a firm direction, absolutely.
So, if I may add to Frank's point, the, the one difference about this property south of the quarry is that's, that's town-owned, which is, it puts it in sort of a different bucket, if you will. The other properties are privately owned, and, you know, they are right now free to, you know, sell or-
Do whatever they want.
Do whatever they want.
However-
This is a property that's owned by the town, and it's not on the tax rolls right now, so it's in a slightly different category, so that's why I wanted to address that.
So, we would have the, we would have the ability to put any deed restrictions on it that we wanted, that it had to be owner occupied and et cetera?
Correct.
Judy?
I seem to remember when the sewer system went in over there, that there was a stretch out through by the old landfill that they weren't able to put the sewer line to, and that, that property that is just-
Was not.
Back toward the village, where the, the trailer is on the site, it's, it's actually the next property to the old landfill site, and that property does not have a sewer system, does not have a sewer hookup there.
Probably because of ledge, maybe?
Yeah.
No, because of the design of the system.
Oh.
The, the current, the occupant at the time wouldn't allow the, the main line to go across his property, so it couldn't be gravity from West Polat to, to down to the plant, so they had to put a pump station for West Polat, and then, in order to get all the pitch right, they couldn't go deep enough to come down and get that property because of the crest of the hill there.
So, there's still not, there's still not a hookup there, right?
Not for, not for that, quite re-anchored that trailer.
Right.
Those are the only two places in-
In the village.
In proximity of the sewer system that are not hooked up, and that's because it's not available.
Haley?
I'm sorry, no, please, go ahead.
I just wondered, so, so will this, would that affect in any way some other housing on the other side?
I, I don't really think so.
Okay.
But, I, but like you're saying, are you saying that if something was to be considered developing some of the property behind where the landfill is?
No, no, I mean across the street, across the road.
Oh, up there? No, that, that farther, that property is more like up behind Frank's house where the open property is, that's not quarry pile.
There's, there's two fields back there. One is.
Right. Only one of them, only one of them the town owns and, and it owns that wooded parcel.
And you've walked it. It's very like ledged. It's all rock. And very.
And the only access, I believe, is, is off a new street there, up by Rodney's house.
Yeah, and that's a.
Owning all the way, it would be a, there would be quite a lot of discussion to make a development there for sure, but it's still viable option and like you said, we make zero money on taxes right now.
Right, but the, but the engineering and the improvements, when you're looking at affordable housing, is all those costs go up versus someplace where you, it's flat already and you can just plug stuff in. That's a concept, because it is, if you're looking at a map from up above, you don't really understand how ledged and steep those ledges are in that field up, up back.
You've got a great view though, Frank.
Robin Kramer, Robin Kramer was trying to make, put corn in up there and it was a, I was waiting for him to tip the tractor over, it was kind of a little steep.
Anybody else have?
Yeah, so Howie Boyce, West Pollitt resident. I just want to acknowledge Michael for all of his efforts, as well as other committee members, including Jessica, who is an incredible resource for the town, for the village. I just want the select board to know, as a resident of West Pollitt, that it was a very inclusive process. There, there are all types of people that live in West Pollitt. And there's new folks, there's old folks, there's all types of folks down there. And I felt Michael did a very respectful job of including the community.
And he had a series of town halls and meetings, he did, had made every effort for having anyone communicate with him in different forms of communication. So I'm really encouraged because I really feel that this really is, was a productive initiative. It was money, grant funding well spent. Michael did a wonderful job and was very respectful, patient, and inclusive with the community and with Jessica as well's leadership being a resource and a liaison with all of you. And I'm very encouraged because, you know, there's been a lot of like ideas and big ideas for the village and nothing really materializes. But again, me, my participation in the process, I attended the meetings, the town hall meetings that I put and gave my feedback. I am very encouraged by this initial draft proposal to try to revitalize the village because, you know, as we all know the history, you know, it's had, you know, booms and busts and it's a beautiful town, there's a lot of potential. We're all very grateful to live there and I think we're all very proud to live there. So I thank the select board and its efforts in support of this initiative. I thank Michael, I thank all the community members in West Pollitt that participated and provided feedback. And I truly think this was an inclusive process. It a lot, it can become not very equitable or inclusive, especially where we live. But I feel like Michael made it his mission to really talk to everyone in town, that what he was able to and to make this process accessible for everyone. So I really hope the select board hears that and he put a lot of time into this project and initiative. And I do feel like he did get the feedback of mostly many people in town. So I thank Michael, I thank Jessica for your leadership, I think others who did participate.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Michael? Frank?
The only thing I was advocating is we add provision to dovetail this plan to the town energy plan because of developments in the state and, and those directions are going to have to require major adaptation and expenses in every town. And, and this affects affordability and a whole bunch of things because again, there's, there's a bunch of people in the, in the state house that are heavily focused on changes.
So we'll, we'll keep that all in mind as, as we progress with this.
Yeah. Eric?
What I'd like to know is what is the total amount of the grant that we're gonna get? And what is the portion that the town would have to pay for doing this?
Oh, we already, we already got the grant.
We've got the grant, so how much is it?
What was it, ten percent?
It was, it was something like 26,000 and we had a, about a 2,000 match or something. It wasn't, it wasn't that much.
That was to make the plan?
That was to make the plan.
Just to make the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, this is sort of the first step toward doing later things.
And so then we'll just do bits and pieces of whatever we get money for, or will we apply for a master grant to do all of?
No, not all of it.
Probably a justify, because many of these items are, are sort of long-term.
Yeah, they're just.
We try to identify a couple of priorities and it's kind of up to the board to say, okay, we want to go after this next or this next. So you, obviously the wastewater treatment plant would be probably one of the first priorities.
And we're already in process with that one.
Yeah, and so this helps to go after that one first. In fact, there's some, there's one recommendation I had in here, which I did make a priority, only because I didn't want it to compete. For example, is, is pursuing some business loans to help provide some new business activity in West Pollitt. That's under the same grant umbrella that the wastewater treatment stuff is for. I didn't want the town competing against itself from the same grant program, so I wanted to put the wastewater treatment plant first and then sort of as, as a second, secondary goal is, is going after some of those other grants, that sort of thing. But I, I didn't put a timeline on any of these things because it gives you more flexibility to say, you know what, we don't want to do that this year, we're gonna do something else instead.
Okay. I just see these underutilized properties here that are privately owned. These people have all the possibility, they could do this on their own, right?
Yes.
If they wanted to.
Yes, in fact, one of the things I was recommending is that we reach out to some of these property owners or we have a liaison to reach out to these folks and say, hey, do you have any plans for your property? Is there anything that the town is doing that's keeping you from realizing what you want to do? Is there any way we can help? Just to see if we can help out, just talk to them. Sometimes the biggest thing you do is just gotta talk to people, so, yeah.
Well, thank you. Frank?
North and south of the town are land trust properties with developments rights acquired, so you can't expand up 50, 153 or south on 153.
And that's a problem throughout the state. They've realized that they've conserved too much property and now there's no place to spread their wings and fly.
In the interest of time.
Okay.
I'm wondering if maybe you'd like to add us to the next meeting agenda to continue the discussions?
We probably need to, give, give us some time to look, review this and maybe bump it out to.
We have one more meeting in May.
Probably have to come out.
Um, which is I know when the grant.
So we can get a chance to look that over. Good, very good idea. Thank you.
In two weeks, we can revisit this, we'll put you back on and we can communicate. In the meantime, I think we're, we have no more time to talk about this now because we've spent much more than we've.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna just draw a hard line and say, I think everybody's had a chance to talk.
So now we're on to reports?
All right. Now we're on to announcements.
I have none. Does anybody else?
Reports?
Yes. Nancy?
Hi, so nine permits to date. I identified one unpermitted construction going on this week, so approached the property owner and let him know that a permit was required for their construction. Eighteen scanning of all documents should be completed by the end of the month, so I'm averaging about a year a month on the scan. I attended a Rutland Town Public Comment Meeting for short-term rental ordinance. It's happening in all the towns that they're, they're looking at the short-term rental phenomenon. And I am gonna bring it to the planning board meeting to address the issue to see what course we should take. The primary concern really is safety on these properties, that we know where the properties are, that the fire department knows where the properties are, that we know the number of occupants in these properties, or some type of plan, and we know the, who the property owner is, the property manager. There haven't been any catastrophic events in this area yet, but every town is looking at it like it could be. So, as I said, that would be something that would be brought to the Planning Commission. The only other thing I have is at the end of the month, I will be attending a Rutland-wide meeting of zoning administrators being held up in the middle. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Nancy? All good. Thank you very much.
Planning Commission.
Nope, not this one.
Okay. Which brings us to the road foreman's report. I had no, I have not received a report from the road foreman for this meeting. I don't know. Maybe Rich did, and I don't know Bob if you've heard anything.
I have not.
No. So I have a couple of things that are pertaining to the highway department, though. The first one is about the slag pile policy, so you were all emailed that in between the last meeting and now. So we do, the town does have a, some.
Excuse us.
Sorry.
Please, if you want to talk, go to the bathroom, please. Thank you.
So the town does have the slag pile policy currently. Did anybody get a chance to look at that?
I did not look at it.
So, in essence, so it's, it's a memo and it's not dated, so I'm not exactly sure when it was put together. But it does say that the slag pile is located on the south side of Vermont Route 153, across from the town shed in West Pollitt. The intention of the Pollitt Select Board is to manage the location in a way that improves the adjacent road condition and to provide a benefit to residents and contractors who live in Pollitt. Therefore, we ask you follow these guidelines when loading or removing material from the location. Slag is not to be sold to residents, rather you can bill them for time loading and hauling. Slag is only to be used in Pollitt, not hauled to other towns unless approved by the Pollitt Select Board. There is a limit of 500 yards of fill per job site without the prior approval of the Select Board. In order to work in the quarry, contractors must have a certificate of insurance on file with the town clerk with coverage of at least one, $1 million. Contact Keith Mason, road crew foreman, or Bob Jones, member of the Pollitt Select Board so that they can coordinate work and identify areas of need. Record the amount of material that is removed. The fee for use is $1 of in-kind service per yard. And when working in the quarry, please be aware of the following safety concerns. Do not undermine the pile, do not leave an overhang, replace roadblocks when you leave, and leave the site better than you found it and leave it safe. So obviously there's the, you know, updating the contact, so putting Dale in there. And other than that, I don't know if anybody, I just wanted to open up discussion in terms of whether or not you think there needs to be amendments to that or if you think it looks as good as it is.
I don't think so, honestly.
I thought we covered all the bases when we put it together.
Yeah, so.
I think we just need to make it available so people know about it.
Yeah, so I.
In our ordinances on the website? I don't think so.
I could not find it on the website. So what I was thinking I would do would just be to retype it up with updating Dale's contact information there and putting a date on it, just so that next time we want to look back, we can see the last time we looked at it. And then seeing if we could add it to the website.
Julie has her hand up.
Oh.
Julie?
Hi, so I didn't find that in the ordinances book, which sort of, and, and the language on it specifically said memo, which sort of led me to believe that maybe we should just change the formatting a little bit to call it a policy or an ordinance. They don't believe it's actually classified as such. And so I think if you did that and then just changed the update of contact person to road foreman or highway liaison, to the select board, and that would cover you sort of in perpetuity.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Right, that, that way it doesn't, it's not specific.
That's a great idea.
The reason it was instituted many years ago is because one contractor moved in there without discussing it with the town and then just used a whole bunch of, of slate rubbish on a project and. He benefit, the contractor benefit, benefited from it. I mean, the, the, the people that got this slate rubbish definitely benefited, but the contractor benefits and that's why we wanted the little bit of in-kind service that, because we can't sell it, we have a, this non-compete policy in the state, but they can return the good deed to us, is what we were looking for. So like if they were in there working, they could load us a few loads if we needed it and et cetera. That was kind of the whole policy to just kind of keep everybody upfront and then make sure that there was a, a specific process to, to do if you wanted to get in there.
So marching orders moving forward, can I just, I'll update this and send it out to everybody and then maybe at the next meeting if you want to adopt it?
Adopt it as a policy or, or ordinance, right? Policy is probably good enough.
Yeah, I think so. All right, I will.
Maybe have some copies of it made that Dale could have on hand.
Yeah.
He could just give them to the contractor.
Yeah, sure. Anybody that, anybody that wants.
Yeah, he could keep some at the office there and they can be available.
It's very few anyway, really. It's the same ones all the time, so. Then they would know.
Yeah, perfect.
Harley?
Question, is it strictly for contractors or can residents help themselves to?
We felt that it needed to be strictly for contractors because of insurance purposes. We didn't want a resident up there getting hurt, you know, because it is a pile and you touch one and it slides and if you're not familiar with it, you could easily get hurt.
Or have the wrong equipment in there. If you go in there with the wrong equipment, you could get hurt.
Right.
Easily.
So we figured.
Shovel folds into five gallon buckets, kind of thing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because you could slip and fall. That stuff, some of it's just like a knife and it'll.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's pretty rough. I mean, what you do in the middle of the night at midnight, I don't know, you know? And if you run out there, there's a whole bunch down the road.
Yeah.
Frank?
But we have to have a rule, so.
Of course, somebody could come to the board as an individual.
No, they have to have insurance.
Somebody to move it for them.
Exactly, that's all they need to do, is hire, hire a licensed contractor.
Local, local contractor.
What else do we have besides this?
So the only other thing that I have to report is, I have to pull up the email. So I got an email from, oh dear, where is it? Sorry. Yes. I don't know where it is, but the town of Pollitt has been, it has been recommended that the town, I can't find the email at this moment and I won't waste your time, but it has been recommended that the town of Pollitt be approved to receive the structures grant that we applied for, for the bridge. So, surprise. So that's exciting. So that just came, that came from Patrick, right? I forwarded it to you all just shortly before the meeting.
Yeah, I saw it.
And so anyhow, there's going to be a grant agreement drafted up that we'll be able to take a look at and that is exciting.
Then we'll have to go through a process of hiring a contractor, right?
Yeah, and we'll have to, I mean, so there was a quote that Dale obtained for the project, so.
What exact work is this for?
So this is for the.
This bridge down here.
Bridge right here on School Street. And so this is for the lead paint remediation and resurfacing and repainting.
Okay.
So it's, just as a reminder, though, this was also the grant application that was for, for a hefty amount. It's a $200,000 grant, but the overall project was closer to $300,000. So it was something that the board, we determined that if we were to be granted these funds, we needed to do some considering to see if it's something that we actually could manage. The other part of that, though, is the cool part, and maybe it's a little tricky, Julie, as you're listening to this. The terms of this grant is that it can be stretched through two fiscal years, the way that our fiscal year is laid out. So in theory, you know, we could spend part in one fiscal year and then budget for the latter part in the next, because I believe there's, there's an extended, I have it written down somewhere, I don't want to misspeak, but there is an extended construction timeline that, that can be used for this, so.
I wonder if we can get RFPs before we have, we accept the grant, to see if we, if we're even gonna come close.
So we had to get a quote when we applied because we needed to get it for budget. So I know that Dale already got one quote from a local person. We could put out other RFPs. I believe, though, my understanding is that the outfit that Dale worked with is kind of the.
Daniels?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe. So we can dive more into that, but.
Okay, so they, I, I wasn't sure what went on in the, in the preliminary stages. So we know that, that it's not just a little bit of money, but the, the whole job is way, way out of it, so.
Yeah, and so, but what I had observed is with that quote that Dale got, it, it seemed to be, like we were saying, there was, I think there was like somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 budgeted for traffic control. And there were a lot of line items that, I don't know anything about anything in this industry, I guess, but there were just some line items that I'm curious as to whether or not were entirely necessary to be hired out. So I think the bulk of that cost was to set up the scaffolding and to do the lead paint removal properly and then, you know. So we need to sink our teeth a little bit more into it. I was, I was surprised, honestly, to get the email to say that it's been recommended that we would receive it. I was, I was surprised, would, honestly, to get the email to say that it's been recommended that we would receive it. Again, haven't gotten anything formal, so stay tuned. More to come on that, but just letting you know that that's coming.
Something popped up in the chat. I don't know if it's pertinent to what we're talking about now or not.
That was the same. Well, I mean, they didn't do it well, but they did it other way.
Um...
We got it yesterday, last month.
Okay, um, and then, other than that, continuing to work with that Ethan Papin, I think his name is, about the highway safety one, the highway safety grant for 153 North Pollet Road.
North Pollet, yeah.
So, he's really helpful and we're going to work closely together on that, but ultimately, his recommendation is that we, um, go with, like, any sort of appropriate... Jennifer typed her report for us. So, anyhow, so, that's more to come.
That's where we're at, more...
More to come on...
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned on that. And then, the highway safety grant for the North Pollet Road Route, uh, 30 intersection. I'm continuing to be in touch with Ethan on that. And he's been super helpful and ultimately, he's recommending better signage, you know, adding a stop sign and maybe a T-crossing sign across from that intersection. He also would highly recommend road painting, so painting like stop ahead and putting better, you know, like the big white line at the, at the end of the intersection, things like that, so...
Yeah, I, I go that way a lot and the, there's a tree that, now that it's leafing out, is in front of the stop sign.
Yeah, you can't see it at all. Yeah, and, um, so, there was another accident there, um, in that area of the roadway, like two weeks, a week or two ago, but turns out it was not related to that intersection.
Is that due to the North Pollet Road?
Not due to the North Pollet.
It was due to a dumb driver.
That's right. So, anyway, so that's all, um, for that I have.
Uh, what about, have you talked to somebody about putting the speed signs back up, what that process is?
So, yes and no.
You, you, you're working on it?
Working on it.
Oh, perfect.
It's percolating. I had, I had that moment, I like, you know, when I wake up at 3:00 in the morning and I'm like, oh, yeah. That. So, I've had that a couple of times in the last two weeks. So, it's there.
At least you didn't totally forget.
No, no, no.
So, good, then we're working on it.
Yeah, we're working on it, but I think, um, we still have to, thinking about other locations. I haven't heard any feedback from anybody else about other locations besides by the fire department in West Pollet, so...
Up the road, at the end of town, towards the end of town, up in the, where you come into Philly.
Okay, yeah, so those, those two, and then, so we'll get those going and I will get with Dale. I was meaning to get with Dale before tonight, but, you know.
Could you, uh...
Life goes on.
Stress the importance of having a report for each meeting on what's occurred? And I'd also like to see what the, the grand scheme for the summer is.
Yeah.
I know it's been discussed, but I don't know that we ever got a formal, and, and I know that it's a dream, but...
No, no.
You got to dream big.
No, and that was, that's part of the, that's part of the deal, so I will check in on that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, because excavator rental and all that stuff's going to be coming up here pretty quick.
Yeah.
If they're going to do that White Hill Road. A lot of things. They have done a bunch of grading, though.
Yeah, they, they were down by me today, so... Anything else? Anybody have for the road? Okay, next.
The assessors, um, there's no report at this meeting. However, Karen did write to let us know that the Assessor's Office has received approval for the grant list extension request.
Okay, town clerk's memo?
We have a memo from Deb. Deb, would you like me to read it or would you like to take it away?
Um, I gotta get my video. I guess it doesn't really matter if you can see me, but, oh, there it is. I wasn't given enough time to raise my hand for the highway, but I got a call today from a resident on White Hill Road, um, that it appears that some furniture was dumped on one side of the road close to 133 and somebody dumped a load of, like, um, leftover construction wood parts on the other side of the road. So, um, I should call Dale on that, uh, because I may get a chance to learn to it to him. But I just, I told this, this resident that I would let the board know tonight. Other than that, um, kind of answered, sort of answered my question about the condensers that needed to be cleaned. I think Perry was the one that mentioned that we shouldn't be turning on any AC until those condensers are on care. So, um, we are not using the cooling, we don't need it right now, but, um, just wanted to get an update on that.
When I, when I talk to Jake tomorrow, I'll make sure to mention to have those serviced as soon as he can fit it in his schedule.
Okay, sounds good. Um, that's all I have, unless anybody has something for me.
Everybody sat? Thank you very much for joining us.
Yep.
Thanks, Deb.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Julie?
Hi. Uh, two warrants this week. Payroll, $9,392.13. Accounts payable, $31,867.15. Of that general fund money, $12,943.34. Highway, $22,728.8. And wastewater, $5,595.41. I have compared, I have received and compared the joint evolution tax bill to our records and found it to be accurate. It is one of the bills that's included in this warrant. I wanted to let you know that we received the $100,000 grant payment to the Route 153 project. And I, uh, contacted a locksmith about rekeying, the, the guy that rekeyed the library about rekeying the town hall. I left a sheet with notes for the two building people. But his quote, his approximate quote was in the $300 to $350 range, um, depending on what we wanted to do. But I think that, um, a specific goal should just be to rekey the entire building and have it be so that the auditorium is accessed via a separate key from everything else.
That makes the most sense. That way, we don't have to have the chance of anybody getting into this building or... And we don't have to worry about giving a key out that gets to where they don't need to be.
Right.
What do you guys think about that?
I agree with that, yes.
Yeah, that was the situation the library had, why they had to rekey, was because like, keys had gone to all sorts of people.
So, if, are we all good with that? Do we want to tell or just go ahead, have that key work done?
Yeah, it's, it's a low enough amount. I don't think we have to make a motion for it.
Yeah, go ahead, just get it done, Julie. That sounds, that sounds in order.
Okay.
Frank?
If you have a lot of this going on, maybe those combination push-button things are not, you could use, change those at any time.
Yeah, I think it's just as good to have the keys. They took up a lot of space. And they'll be a lot of money.
Yeah.
They're like $150 a pop or better, so...
Right, you need a motion for the two warrants?
Yes.
Um, I'll make a motion for warrant 23061 and 23062.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Um, I have a little bit that I'd like to bring up during the treasurer's memo because I, I did attend a webinar about town finances for Select Board members. And I guess, I guess this little bit of information I have here is both for the board and, and for Julie. They were suggesting some various, um, policies that towns often have and these are ones that we don't seem to have. We don't seem to have a purchasing policy. I was looking, I was asking Julie about this a few weeks ago, which is sort of the, do we need to go out to bid for, you know, what amount? We don't seem to have that. And it is a thing a lot of towns have and might be useful. Another thing, now that we have investments, a lot that we just got, um, a lot of towns who do investments have an investment policy, which basically states what the Select Board's, um, sense is of what our goals should be with the investments of the town. You know, to, to state how we want to shepherd the taxpayers' money that we are, that we are investing. So, evidently, VLCT has a model of, of that kind of policy. And I was just wondering if that might be something we would, might be interested in, in having.
I think it makes sense. What do you guys think?
If so, I can look into the VLCT model and see what they have and what we might, and get with Julie and see what we might want to have.
I'm sure it's based on a count our size and...
Yeah, yeah, because VLCT knows about the size of towns.
Right.
Yeah, that would just be, the, the, the idea behind it would just be that, you know, we would have a clear guide of what our investment strategy was, so that then Julie could take that and ju, not always have to come back to the Select Board every single time that like one of those six-month things rolls over or something, that it would give her the guidance of what to do, basically. Alright, I'll, I'll look into those model VLCT policies. That's all I have.
Kristen?
Um, Julie, what would you like me to do with this insurance thing? For Brad?
Oh, um, if someone, I'm not around tomorrow, but if someone could get it to, I guess we can just put it, just put it in my office and I will get it into his checkbook and have him fill it out.
Okay, cool.
Harley?
I didn't track whether the policy about expenditures, was that going to be followed up on? I, I, the investment thing's going to be followed up on, but the, uh, setting up a policy for...
The purchasing policy?
Purchasing policy. I'm, did I miss it? What's the next action that would take place there?
Do we want to have a town purchasing policy? Because all we've got right now is in the staff handbook, not the staff handbook, the employee handbook. It says, you know, if it's over $600, people have to come to the Select Board for it.
It, it seems like once upon a time, I can remember going over a lot of that stuff, but it was probably eight or 10 years ago.
Yeah, and Julie and I looked for it and we couldn't find it. It was because we had a, we have a grant that has, um, the one we have together with Rupert and we have to go by our town's purchasing policy. And since we didn't have one, we have to go by the state's one, which is a little more onerous. So, if we had a purchasing policy that said, you know, above certain amount, we would need to get multiple bids and below that amount, we wouldn't have to, as long as it was fair, that would, that would have satisfied that, but we didn't seem to have it.
To that, Julie?
On both of these policies, I also can send around something to our, um, municipal lister and just ask other towns to send us copies of what they have in policies. I find that to be helpful as well.
Okay.
That, that sounds good to me.
But I, I think it's, I think it's important that we do have that policy in position so that we're not scratching our heads again, like we have several times, oh, do we need to do it or not, or... So, is that something, do you have time to...
Yeah, I'll look at the VLCT models and it sounds like Julie can ask around with other towns and we can just see what people do.
You'll, you'll look around for a, a spending policy, Julie?
Sure. I mean, most of my policies that I came up with, honestly, I looked at VLCT policies and modeled policies from other towns and just like reworded it to things that made sense for us. So, that's what I envisioned Jessica and I doing on these two policies.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you very much. Anything else for Julie? You're good with all yours?
Except for me?
Okay, thank you, Julie. And next.
Emergency Management Director's report. There's none at this meeting tonight. Um, for the health officer, Jennifer sent a message that said, no news on the West Pollet Route 153 camper situation and we will get an update, um, during the first meeting in June.
Okay.
Um, wastewater.
And next up, we have wastewater.
Julie?
There was an email that came from Jill, um...
Shortly after the last meeting, I think, wasn't it?
Yes, and... So, the email just came with, uh, operations updates from March 3rd to May 4th. Uh, monthly samples have been collected and went with the lab courier. Uh, monthly, that happened several times over that time period. Michael McDonald started working part-time at the facility as the weekend coverage operator. Over this period, the left-hand heater in the large part of the facility was replaced and the heater in the lab was repaired. Some outstanding items, they're working on getting the transfer switch repaired and not finding the password to the equipment. Um, in parentheses, it says electrician. The right-hand heater will be addressed after the change in fiscal year by the HVAC tech. One manhole to repair at the top of New Street, which will be handled by, uh, VTUMs. Controls to update at Spruce Gum Pump Station to get Pump 1 back online with Tim from Avanti. And transponders to replace on clarifiers, also with Tim. And that's that.
The deal with the transfer switch is, in order to test it, you have to be able to tell it to go in and it's, it's locked out with a passcode, so you can't just tell the transfer switch to do a, an auxiliary. And I, I haven't talked to her in a while, so I don't know if she was able to find a, a code or if we have to call Kinsley and see if the, the, the baseline code is still in it or what.
Yeah, there has to be some sort of like master code that a technician can use.
It may be that, that it was never changed from the, from the original code, but I don't know if we, if we were able to get one from Kinsley or not, so we haven't done it yet. And other than that, the reports are looking pretty good. Everything seems to be coming back alright. So, we have a week, a weekday operator and now we have a weekend operator, so, uh, so that works good. And they're both local, so that also works good. And anything else? I guess that's about it. I don't know anything else going on in the treatment plant, so...
And next up is the facilities report, um, which is where we had...
Go right ahead, Harley.
Time for Harley.
Two issues, uh, that came up, uh, at the last, uh, library board meeting. We, the library has, uh, a history of offering access to people, like bone builders, when there isn't a library employee or town employee present. And somebody raised a concern of, what does our insurance policy, does this violate our insurance policy? And my response was, or what I thought was, what do you do about the upstairs when, when, um, is there a town employee present? Or do we know enough about our insurance policy to say whether or not this is an issue?
Yeah, we, our, our policies are always covered every, all the activities that go down.
I said, whether or not there's a town employee present.
I don't believe that that has any, any bearing.
Policy that they require.
It would have to be from VLTC that you would get the, that particular answer for exactly, so...
Okay.
There's a, there's a risk analysis guy that Julie may know. Do you know the risk analysis guy, Julie, from VLTC that Harley may be able to get in touch with?
I can, uh, shoot him an email with some contact information.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I...
Sure.
I think, uh, don't ask, don't tell, or don't open that can of worms, kind of response, like, this is how we've done it for decades at the library and, uh, keep doing it that way, but somebody raised a concern, Julie.
There's, there's a guy that comes around and does the risk analysis, um, from them and stuff like that. So, he would, I think he would be your first point of contact to, he's not, you know, he's not really there to, to, to check off, to make sure you're doing it right. He's there to help us make sure that we're doing it right. We're not to get scolded, you know, so...
Okay, I see. Risk people tend to be very conservative. Uh, issue two, library policies, as we review and possibly update, uh, library policies. And if there's any changes, is this something we submit to the Select Board for review? Or is there even approval? I don't think there's any history of that, but I was asked to check.
I don't think we've ever been involved in, to my knowledge, any of the library policies at all, so...
Thank you.
I mean, it's basically just that it's a town-owned building.
Say, what I can add to that is when Julie and I were going over the employee, the personnel policy, um, it was determined that the library did not, right? Is that right, Julie, that...
It states it explicitly in the town personnel policies, although adopting them, uh, for the library isn't a bad idea, but it states explicitly the fees apply to town employees, but not the library.
That's right.
Thank you. That was it.
That's it. Great, thank you. And next?
Uh, the Meadowway School Board Report. Julie, would you like to give that or... Julie, would you like to give that, or would you like me?
I can do that.
Great.
Give me one second. Um, at our regular meeting on May 8th, we received and reviewed the audit letters. Uh, we finalized the date for our annual board retreat in September and monitored policy 3.2, accountability of the superintendent, and 3.3, delegation to the superintendent. We also continued discussing the results of our March community engagement event and decided how to best sort and share the data with the school admin, and will continue to look at the data for potential adjustments to the global end policy at our September retreat. Uh, also in May, the VRU Chair, Jim Southgiver, provided the monthly legislative update regarding education-related legislative activity. All of the boards within VRU worked collaboratively this year to advocate for legislation, and we felt that we had some success and may want to continue next session. Our next board meeting will be June 12th at the Rupert Community Building and virtually on Google Meet. As always, we welcome public comment during our regularly scheduled meetings.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Julie. Anybody have any questions for Meadowway School Board? Thank you. And next?
Uh, next, we have older unfinished business. There are two items, well, the slag pile policy, which we've already discussed, and then I left the bike and ped grant agreement.
Yeah, and there's no movement on it, it's with B-Trans right now.
Right, so the two items that are, were there are no longer needed.
Any other old business? Nope, new business?
Yes, um, I'm inquiring on when we're going to follow up with a site visit to Briarville.
I believe that the site visit is scheduled for the first of June, it's the beginning of June. I saw a couple of emails where Nancy had, had reached out, because there was supposed to have been one like today or something, was the original plan. But, and Merrill came back and said that it's beginning of June, or something, very, very early, maybe the first or second. Um, I'm sure you'll be kept aware of it, because you're going to be.
I was also thinking about how that's coming up.
Right. So I think you'll get to go, and Merrill, and Nancy, and we'll see what happens. I believe that one of these days, right along this week, maybe we've, maybe it was May 15th or something, was the day that everything was supposed to be in compliance, or something like that. We'll go, and as far as any, anything from the official thing, nothing?
So Nancy's going as our second person?
She's going as the only minister.
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Any other new business? Good of the company, uh, good of the company. That was Robert, that's from Robert's Rules.
Good of the company.
That, that was all, that was all back from dual fire department days, that I was president of the fire department. Public comment, all right, thank you. Frank?
I got two things, uh, that are kind of mega important to keep on the radar. Uh, first is a key question is, our, Julie may know this, is, do we exceed the $250,000 in any one bank of the FDIC insurance plan? We had three banks go down, and fourth one is technically on its way. They had the bank guys in front of Congress today that failed banks. And there's this guy, Edward Dowd, who was a black rock, big wig, and he took it from $2 billion to $14 billion, he's not with them anymore, but one of the things he's doing is tracking the financial health of banks.
Do we exceed the $250,000 FDIC?
I assume we do.
Hi, was that for me?
Yes, please.
Uh, yes, we do, but we have collateralized deposits, so our deposits are protected, um, in the event of a bank failure. And, um, that's pretty standard for municipalities.
Excellent, Frank, question two?
Yeah, so one of the, well, Ed Dowd said there's 186 banks that are in the same financial dubiousness as those California banks and the New York bank. So this is, people getting shaky and they're pulling their deposits, and that leads to problems. So number two is this Senate bill, Senate five, the energy thing, that the O-Rod thing on this, this is.
Affordable heat act?
Yep, this is essentially going to put, you know, all the coverage is, is going to put the oil dealers out of businesses, out of business, uh, and they want to transition all the oil dealers to be installers of heat pumps, is what the, and they accredit them, is this whole thing. But it's going for two years for evaluation, and we'll have to vote on it again, apparently, but there's a question on this legal opinion, is that they would have to vote on it again, again in two years. But if, if we're going to go with anything, uh, heat like this building, or any building, and, and focus on oil, or, because old wood stoves are also going to be taken off the, off the, on the legal list. Uh, anything with more carbon than they feel is necessary. And this went through with a big, to override a government's veto is pretty strong. And so we don't know where this is going, but we might want to have our town representative down, Robin, who's would be tied in this season housing, to explain what this, what our strategy should be, and the people in the town's strategy should be, maybe relative to this, as opposed to spending money on something and then being told in two or three years that you, you, you wasted a lot of money. And, uh, so that's the concept of, of maybe, uh, doing a public service as well as being an information thing. Because Robin would know, because he was up there through the whole thing.
He didn't know at the town meeting, so.
No, no, he, he didn't, he, he was cut off at the meeting, because of, because of the Wells people, he had to go into the Wells thing, and so he cut it off.
All right, thank you for your input, Frank.
He had no more, and they passed it.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I move we adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.